Mr. Flick.
President of the United States of America. To the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
I like my steak in that sandwich.
Yeah, you're right. Well, it's a long time we haven't, this is the first time we've been here, what, over a year? Right? Yeah, sure. It is a nice job in fixing the stuff, I have to say. Town did a great job. The reason some people have masks up here and some people don't, in case you're asking. Last week they had a town board meeting, and the procedure they used was anybody who was vaccinated and chose not to wear the mask, because behind the plastic glass, they felt it was safe. So, some people chose to wear the mask anyway, so that's why you see some with and some without. All right, first order of business is Evan Shapiro and Sue Atkins, 420 Indian Brook Road, Garry's, New York. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. A minutes, approval of minutes, hold on a second, from April. Any changes or alterations, anybody? Anybody, okay? I get a motion? Motion to...
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we can do it. Evan Shapiro and Sue Atkins, 420 Indian Brook Road. You're going to speak for them? Okay, you can take the microphone, you talk to the mic. Okay. Yes, it's an application, it's seeking a variance for a constructed 622-foot square foot garage within the side yard setback, proposing a 14-foot, 7 and 3/8 inch setback where 30 feet is required.
Is there something we should say on that board?
So, we're, okay, I thought we'd be doing the old business first, but, okay.
Okay. What? I have things to say here.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, you have to speak to the mic. And just tell us, identify yourself, something for the audience.
My name is Ju Healy Hartford. I'm an architect at River Architects founding principal. And we're, I am here to represent our clients, Sue Atkins and Evan Shapiro. They reside at 420 Indian Brook Road, as mentioned. And they have a, just one-story dwelling, which is...
Excuse me, can you, if you put that on bright view, will you be able to see it?
Yeah.
Okay.
If I put right here, you mean?
If you put the easel.
Okay. So, if I put the...
Usually I can achieve the easel.
I'm sorry, so...
Okay, we got it here anyway.
It's slightly different from the 11 by 17s that was submitted. Unless you're exactly where I should stand.
Oh, that's okay.
All right. All right. It's... What is different about it than what we submitted? This is, we had to enlarge it onto a 24 by 36. So, it's like, a few things, we tried to group it, you know, on one sheet, and some... So, what, as you may be familiar with the project, our client's property, 420 Indian Brook Road is, 420 Indian Brook Road is on the east side of the Route 9. And it, our client's property is right next to the Lock Lyle Pond. And the only access to their property is through neighboring property, which is a private road that cuts through. And it is a very, with a limited access, and a limited view from the street. And so, this is the existing house. This is the boundary of their property. The pond is to the north. And the garage that we would like to propose is right in front of the house, because it's just the only place, right in front of the gravel, you know, parking, current parking. And...
Not on the survey.
I couldn't hear you.
On the survey, no. No, it's okay.
Okay. So, in relationship to the side yard setback, so this 30-foot setback is right here. And there's a slight encroachment of the proposed garage, because, number one, you know, we don't want to get too close to the house. Also, we want to situate it where the gravel, the current driveway is. And I'll show you on the photos, in the context. So, if you look at their existing house, it's to the right of the photo, which is to the south. And it's very limited, a tight space. And the garage will go somewhere over here. And this view is actually the other side, the backside of the garage, just showing you the stone walls. And the garage plan, because, you know, we can't fit much on the site, we wanted to at least get some kind of storage with the garage. So, we have one car garage with a little bit of side space and a backspace to the garage. And as you can see, this is the 100-foot setback wetland buffer zone, and we're well with, out of that boundary. A corner of the building wall is at 4 foot 7 and change away from the 100-foot setback. And we spoke to Mr. Garfinkel multiple times about, you know, how to keep it out of there.
What we're looking at tonight is the revised plan, not the original plan.
Correct.
So, what would we be voting on would be revised plan, okay, so you understand that. And I have a letter from Mr. Garfinkel, that you did move it away from the wetlands, so there's no issue there.
Great. And then, just a very modest garage. We're proposing to keep it, you know, at the same height as the house, which is just a one-story with a gable roof. This is, you know, garage car approach. This is side of, side elevation that, south elevation, oh, I'm sorry, this is... Sorry. So, this is the south elevation. This is the north elevation, and this is the back elevation. And just in 3D, we're just showing that this, the garage relates to the existing house, very low-key. And this is the backside.
Excuse me, can you just turn it just a little bit? We can't see the side. There you go. That's...
Yes. Does the line, can you read the lines on this board?
Yeah.
So, on the backside, which is going to face the stream, we do have a stone wall that is going to be repaired and continued under, as a part of the foundation wall of the garage. And...
I can see it fine.
Excuse me, is there, on the drawing I have, there's a door on the bottom by the stone wall, that's...
That's an older version.
That's the original, that's the original version. Yeah, we changed, we went to a different plan to make it a little smaller and move it away from the wetlands.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right.
All right, so...
Oh, okay.
You pretty much explained everything to us in here, and is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this application? All right, make a note that there's nobody there. Anybody have any questions, any board members on this?
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, to confirm the numbers for the proposal. It's a, just, it's a 550 five-foot square foot detached garage, correct?
Detached garage, right, and the 600-figure, that was an older, older number.
Understood.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure the numbers are correct. And the setback from the side yard lot line will be 21 feet, 5 and 1/8 inch, is that correct?
Let me see, side yard setback is...
No.
The latest? Oh, yes, 21 feet, 5 and 8.
That's right. That's what I have.
21 feet, what, I'm sorry?
21 feet.
21 feet.
And 5...
5 and 8.
1/8 inch.
All right, just I'd like to go over the five factors on this. This is what the board considers on an application. Number one here, what possible detriment would the variance have in nearby properties? You have your answer here, is the proposed garage would not have a major visual impact in a neighborhood. It's difficult to see the structure from the public road and the nearby properties. It will have dark sky compliant exterior wall sconces. And 1B is what impacts would the variance have in the character of neighborhood? The variance would have minimal impact on the character of the neighborhood. I have to agree with you, because there's a lot of land there, and it's pretty open, so I don't see anybody, that it's going to disturb anybody. If you didn't get the variance, how else could you build and accomplish your goal? The proposed garage can't be moved to an alternative location due to limitations of existing site conditions. And I understand that because of the wetlands behind you and the stream and everything else like that, so... What code requires you seek the variance, is that you seek the variance at the front yard setback?
Oh, the side yard.
Oh, side yard, I'm sorry.
Yeah, front yard was an old document, because we thought that the approach side was a front yard, but...
Side yard setback, my correction, thank you. What impact if variance have on a current physical and environmental area? Proposed garage is 21 by 20 in the property line, and the code requires minimum 60 feet, we got that. And there would be a minimal regrading and pavement on the east side of the garage. The garage is located near the existing wellhead. You propose to set the structure foundation away from the well. This is a, is this a, as a result of a self-created hardship? And your answer is no. That's a tricky question, because you want to put a garage in, it's a self-created hardship, you know? So, I mean, you didn't have to do it, you wouldn't be a hardship, you know, I'm trying to say, so it's a tricky question, but no, it's all fine.
It is hardship without the garage.
Yeah, right, you could do it without the garage, right. Anybody have any questions, any board members?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, yes, Mr.?
Is there going to be plumbing in this?
Nope.
And heat?
I don't think so, that we were talking to a client, do we want it above freezing? That's yet to be determined.
And the loft area, that's going to be like storage and things of that sort, or is it just open?
It's just open, as far as I know, yeah. Originally, we had a home office tucked underneath, and that was causing a lot of disturbance to the site, so we took that out.
Okay, that wasn't the original plan.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, no questions, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
Mr. Lynn, second, all in favor? All right. I now take a roll call vote on the variance. Mr. Sestone?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Lynn?
I'll vote in favor.
Spencer?
I vote yes.
I vote yes as well.
And I vote yes, okay, you're all set.
Thank you so much.
Now, what happens is attorney makes up a resolution, but you can call the building inspector tomorrow and tell him that you approved, and he'll tell you how to go forward.
Thank you so much.
Okay, you're more than welcome. You did a fantastic job, that's really, I never seen anybody with so many props that really did a good job there. Usually they hand us a piece of paper, you know, I'm trying to, you did good, thank you.
I have top line, I mean, not this slide, but...
Oh, right, in front of, right, okay. All right, let's see, next order of business is...
Who's my name?
Public hearing. Anthony Diane Franch, I guess, 176 East Mountain Road. So, I guess they have a representative here for last time, I believe. This is for a... Let's see. All right, can you move it over, move it over towards the middle there? Any applicants seeking a variance, a constructed 1,250-foot square foot garage? The reason you need the variance is, of course, in Phillips Town, you can't have any more than 1,000 feet. So, that's the reason for the variance. So, we asked you a few things last month, you provided, you provided them with, you provided me with the owner consent form and the survey. And on the survey, I see you put a little square there where the garage is going.
Correct.
Okay. I think you got everything else here, everything was here, it was marked complete last month. Just trying to go over, let's see. Any board members have any questions on this one?
I have the same questions that I have for this, is it going to be water in the...
No.
And is there heat?
I believe we are going to try to put some heat in, we're prepping it for some kind of electric heat, so it can be there in the winter time. But yes, so there will be heat.
What do you need a 50-foot heat garage?
He has a motorhome he's trying to get inside, a camper. A motorhome, he's trying to get a motorhome inside.
And what's a motorhome?
Correct.
Do you have any other garages around that, anybody knows where they're at?
Oh, yeah. That's why you put big garages, that's why...
Which would mean you'd have to have a higher door.
Higher door, yeah, yeah. No, there's a lot. And I'd better have it inside the garage and outside, outside in the yard, looking at it.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak to this, or no? Got a slim audience tonight, that's for sure. All right, I have to go over the five factors on this to see where we're at with this, okay? Number one, what possible detriment would the variance have on nearby properties? And your answer says none. It's 30 feet from existing house, and will not block any views, and standard wall lights. Okay, what about drainage on this? Are you going to, what kind of drainage, are you going to have gutters to drain down to the toilet?
We'll have gutters on the building. He has, you know, he has it paved already, we're budding right up to his pavement. So, where the building was going was just a grassy runoff, it runs away from everything, runs away from its septic. So, we'll bring, we'll bring gutters and leaders down with diffusers on the ground, just diffuse the water. But there's really no impact.
What impact would the variance have on the character of the neighborhood? Let's see. No visible impact for existing, because of existing mobile home, yeah, you're right. So, I'd better have the mobile in the garage than outside the garage, that's true. If you didn't get the variance, how could you build what you want to accomplish in your goal? Reduce the square foot of the proposed garage to 1,000 feet, but then you wouldn't be in the, able to get the thing in there, so I understand that. What code requires you seek the variance, you seek the variance that the 1,000 square feet is maximums, and you're looking for 1,250 square feet? What impact effect would the variance have on the current physical and environmental conditions? Negative impact, 2, 3, 4, what of course, as per survey, wells and septics are above code requirement distance from separation. So, it's far enough away, everything's far enough away from the garage, what you're saying. Okay, if the variance is requested, is the result of a self-created hardship? No, it's the same thing, you know, you could make a smaller garage or something like that, but I understand, and I agree with trying to hide the motorhome. That's a good idea. Anybody have any questions on this application? Just don't get a motion to close the public hearing? Mr. Spencer makes a motion. Ms. Claire, second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
And I ask for a roll call vote on this now, Mr. Sestone?
I vote in favor.
Okay, Mr. Lynn?
I'll vote in favor.
Favor? Mr. Spencer?
I'm in favor.
And I'm in favor also, you got it. Like I say, the attorney has to write up a resolution, but you can call the building inspector tomorrow and tell him it was passed, and he'll tell you how to proceed forward.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. All right, next. Seth and Kate Anderson, 34 Arden, yes, you, come on up. Okay, you just identify yourself, and the mic tell who you are.
Can I, you want me to wear this?
Yeah.
Seth Anderson, my wife Kate's not here today.
Now, what you're looking for here is a variance to build 104 square foot addition and a 280-foot square foot porch.
Correct.
Okay. And this is a pre-existing non-conforming house?
Yes.
Right, so you would need a, well, you're not going to, 174, let's see. What's the square footage of the house now?
1,200.
1,200.
Yeah.
All right, so the 174 is not going over the 25%.
Correct, yeah.
So, all you need is a permit for the 25. Now, the 174 square foot, I'm sorry, and 280-foot square foot porch, is that an open porch or enclosed?
Open.
Open.
Yes.
Okay, the reason I ask you that is because on your application for the building permit, you got interior renovation, addition to his existing bedroom, wraparound porch, and four seasons room.
Right.
Now, where's the four seasons room?
So, I submitted the application for the permit, Greg from the building department split it up into phase one, phase two. Hopefully, phase two is what I'm asking for. He already gave me a phase one, and that was for the interior renovation. So, I have that permit, and we're doing that work right now. You know, we're redoing the kitchen and everything inside. What I'm asking for the waiver for is what he did not grant on that original application, which is the 174 square foot addition, which is going to be a little sunroom off the bedroom, and then the 280 square foot wraparound porch, which is open. So, but I just gave you the initial permit that I, originally I applied for everything, so...
Okay. Well, you provided everything, you got, you got, you got your deed here, you got a survey. You got everything. Anybody have any questions on this application? Is that just complete? Anybody have any, I'm looking for completeness. So, is your total, so I'm just a little confused. So, your total square foot you're looking for is the 280 square foot is on the outside of the house, correct? I mean, it's not, it's not going to be enclosed or anything else like that, right?
Well, there's two things, so the sunroom, which is only 174 square feet, is going to be enclosed, but that's away from the setback. The wraparound porch goes into the setback five feet.
So, how, so it doesn't say, doesn't tell me that. So, what setback, so it goes front yard or side yard?
The required setback's 50, and the required, the wraparound porch goes into that five feet. So, I'm asking for a variance for five feet to go into the setback.
Okay, is that from the front?
With the wraparound porch, the open porch.
From the front yard or which one?
Front yard, yeah.
From the front yard, so the front yard is 50, and you're doing, you're looking at 45, so you're looking for a five-foot variance.
Correct.
So, you're looking for two, you're looking for a permit to build 174?
Yes.
Okay. And you're looking for a variance of five feet for the other, for the wraparound porch?
For the wraparound porch, correct.
So, there's two inches here, okay, great. Okay, looks complete to me. Anybody, can I get a motion, complete?
I'll make the motion.
Complete, Mr. Lynn?
Second.
Second, all in favor? All right. All right, motion's complete, and what we're going to do is going to set it up for a public hearing. And that'll be here, and on May, I'm sorry, June, hold on, June 14th.
June 14th.
Monday, June 14th, there'll be a public hearing. Now, what's going to happen is, do you have the addresses of your neighbors in here? Did you put the addresses of your neighbors in here?
Yes, okay, yeah.
Did you see any, okay, good, all right. And our secretary will be mailing them out to your neighbors, letters to your neighbors, what your plans to do and everything else like that. So, if anybody calls you up or something like that, and they have a right to come and look at the plans, or they have a right to come at the public hearing and speak if they have any questions or anything else like that.
Okay.
That's what'll happen. And then, at that public hearing, after that, we'll take a vote on the two variances.
Perfect.
Understand?
I'll be here.
Okay, thank you, good night.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay. Next one, doesn't look like they're here, for Hudson Lane?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you're here, oh, you're going to do that, okay.
I didn't see the young lady, it was on the Zoom, she's not here, I guess. Right, there, the guy that's, the toddler that they're trying to get to right now.
Now, this is, what we're trying to do here, I guess, I needed the plan, you said, now it makes sense to me, okay? When I was looking at before, it didn't make any sense, okay? But now I look at, I look at your plan and everything, and it shows me what you're planning to do. And it is one house, not two separate houses.
Great.
Well, you look at the thing before, it was two slots, so I, I don't know what the heck it was, okay? So, it makes sense to me now, and I guess with the idea of the first floor, that opening is to put the boat in there for the boat dock, is that it?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
And combining the two lots, so it's extinguishing the property line.
That's what I do, okay. I understand, I understand what you're going to do, but let's go over how many variances you're going to need, because you're going to need a handful here. All right, to do this job. First, you're going to need a permit. Let's see, hold on. Because the two houses, you're going to tear the two houses down, but they're both pre-existing, non-conforming, okay? So, the, what is it, number 28 Hudson River Lane is 908 square feet, nine away. And number 30 is 1,087. That gives you a total of 1,995 square feet.
Right.
Okay. Now, you're proposing 5,650 square feet.
For the total floor area, yeah.
5,600 square feet, so that's a 284% increase.
Okay, but you're counting all the floors?
I'm sorry?
You're counting the floors, though, that's, because it's not a 5,000-square-foot footprint.
Well, that's what you have on your plan.
No. So, okay, so...
Hold on, let me go to it.
The, propose, okay, so the total for the dwelling unit is 2,093.
The what?
2,093 is the total floor area at ground level. I'm sorry, that's for the house.
I'm talking about the whole square foot of the house.
So, the total...
The house is two stories.
Right, this number, the 5,890, is including the roadway that's on their property and the seawall that's impervious. There's a lot of other aspects to it.
And that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about is the square foot of the house. What is the square foot of the house?
Okay, okay.
The house.
The total, okay. Which are we talking about?
Two stories, all inside, you have 5,600.
Yes, so I don't have the application in front of me, so we were calculating just under 5,500 square feet total, including the garage. Including the garage.
So, it's a...
All right, let me, let me read what you have, page, let's do it this way, page AO3 of your...
I don't have that.
You don't have it, okay. You don't have it, you ain't helping me, all right? Page AO3, and you've got, all right, you've got a garage? A garage, 903 square feet, you've got a, first floor is 2,093, and the second floor is 2,753, total of 5,749. Now, I don't believe that the garage is included in the living space. Am I correct? Adam?
Well, I mean, that's a question for...
The building inspector?
Yeah, I mean, that they...
Yeah, I'm trying to get the percentage, you know, what it's over the 25%. You've got 5,6, what I'm reading is, you've got, you say 5,650, let me see where I can find it.
That's the garage, that's in the report from Ron Gaynor. It's in the report from Ron Gaynor, but I've seen also a figure of 4,400 square feet, and that...
Wait, is that, that's just the first floor, second floor?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, well, okay.
Without the garage, most likely.
Okay.
And please...
So, the first floor is, first floor is 2,093, and the second floor is 2,753. Okay? I don't have my calculator on me. What does it come to, let's see, 336, 5 and 1/10, the old-fashioned way. 10 is 4, 7 and 1 is 8, so I have 4,846 square feet. Is that correct?
It's close, yeah.
First floor is 2,093 square feet. And your second floor is 2,753 square feet. I'm reading from this here.
Right, yes.
So, that comes to 4,000... I'm going to make sure we're correct here, okay?
Okay, great, yeah, I appreciate that.
4,846 square feet.
Also, you wrote that it's a four-bedroom house. I looked on your plans, I could only find three bedrooms.
Well, we're assuming that, that one of the, there's an office upstairs that would most likely be counted as a bedroom, so, right. Just knowing how the county counts bedrooms. But also, please keep in mind that there's, there are two existing garages that, in those 1,900 square feet, isn't counting those two garages that are there. We're taking one of those garages away entirely, and we're basically replacing another one.
Is that microphone on? Is that microphone on?
Yeah, but it worked for the sound, it's not working tonight, so...
Oh, okay. Because it's hard, it's a little hard to hear, that's what I'm going to say. Yeah, what I'm trying to, just trying to figure out is, trying to figure out, because you're going to need a number of variances, okay? That's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to get to, okay? That's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to get to, okay? And they've got to be exact, okay? Because we can't guess, you know what I'm trying to say? So I'm, the way I read it, it comes to, the house is going to be 4,846 square feet.
Right.
Okay. I've got to agree with that, because, you know, if you go to foot more, you're in trouble. You understand what I'm trying to say?
Right, I understand.
So this is why I'm being, you know, the exact. I don't know where I got the 5,600 from. I guess I got the 5,600 from, with the garage, okay? So, but it's, what you're going to need, you're going to need, first of all, you're going to need the permit to go up to the 25. Any pre-existing house, if it's, you could do some work on it. If it's up to 25%, you need a permit. If you go over the 25%, you need a variance.
Right, yeah.
Okay. So you're going to need a permit to go up to the 25, and you're going to need a variance to go over. Okay? Now, you're going to need a variance on both sides.
Yes.
North side and, oh, I want to call, oh, here, here.
I'm talking about the side yard setbacks.
Yeah, side yards, you're correct, yeah. You're going to need two side yard setbacks. On the south, of the south yard setback, it's 30 foot is required, and that's on page AO3 I got. You don't have it here. It shows 19 foot, 138 inches that you're there. So you're looking for a 10 foot, 5, a 10 foot, 58 inches variance.
I believe it's 18 foot, 9.
I'm sorry?
18 foot, 9, done this wrong.
18, 9? We're talking about, okay. So that's for the south, right? And we talked about the south yard setback. So what kind of a variance, what is the total variance you're looking for on that side? You tell me. If you need 30 and.
I think to, if you have AO9, and that's what I'm looking at, that has the grid of the variances.
AO9. Please reorganize a little bit for precision.
Because I'm reading that as 30-foot side yard setback is required, and you're proposing 6 feet and 18 feet, 9 inches.
Okay, that's for the south side, right? Now, what is the north yard setback?
Those are the existing ones.
That would be the 6 foot. No, I'm sorry.
No. You're 6 foot from the line, according to what I see. Okay, you're 6 foot from the line, you're supposed to be 30 feet. So you're talking for a 24-foot variance?
So you're going to be in close to the line?
Is that right? The way, the way I read it, the plans, you're 6 feet from the line, okay? And 30 feet is required, so you're looking for a 24-foot variance there.
Correct.
Okay.
Based on the existing house.
I'm sorry?
Based on the existing footprints.
Based on what?
The existing footprint, the existing house footprints. It's a.
We're talking about the one you're going to build, though?
Correct.
It's going to be right there, right?
Right, yeah. But I mean, the pre-existing non-conformance.
Yeah.
Doesn't that heighten it, is it the first floor?
Once you've demolished the structure.
It's over.
Right. Then you have to start over. Then it's the argument of do we somehow rehabilitate these buildings?
Rehabilitate what?
Sort of put it, yeah.
Now, you demolished two houses, we start brand new.
Right.
So you've got to go from what they are, you know what I'm trying to say? So I'm looking at, that's where you're going to put the houses, you know, so if that's, plans are not correct, tell me that.
No, I'm not, that's, that's not what I'm getting at. It's, you know, kind of generally, it's the view that pre-existing non-conforming is allowed to continue. Yes, I acknowledge the houses are being.
Pre-existing non-conforming is anything built prior to 1957. Anything after that, that's non-conforming, is non-conforming because of code changes or they were, or when the code came into effect. So on Hudson River Lane, it's a very unusual situation, because like every house is non-conforming.
Right.
But they're, it's one of, it's one of those things, if you do like just about anything, you have to come before the zoning board.
Right.
Yeah. No, so as far as rehabilitating the current structures, only the building department can tell you what they believe.
Understood, okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
The way we look at it is you've got to demolish two houses, you know, you're starting fresh.
Right.
Okay, I mean, what I mean by that is that you're going to have to conform to, of course, you can't conform to, so you need variances.
Right, okay. Understood. Just so.
Yeah, you understand, you can't conform to. I mean, if you want to, if you're saying that, I understand what you're saying now. If you're saying that because of this house is so far, and this house is so close to the line, if you put it in the same footprint, you're okay, no, that's not the way it works.
Okay.
Okay? Because that doesn't make sense, you know what I'm trying to say? You're going to have to build a whole new structure.
Great, yeah.
So you don't want to start with that, you know?
Right, right.
That's what I'm trying to say, anyway.
Yes, yeah.
Now, what about front yard setback?
So front yard, other than the garage, we're conforming.
How far is it from the property line, the house?
So the property line is actually almost to the railroad tracks. Hudson River Lane is largely on their property.
Property line is the railroad tracks?
Pretty much, yeah.
Where's the survey?
So the railroad tracks are here, the prop, this black line here, this gray is Hudson River Lane, and you can see that almost like corner to corner, it's right extending all the way to the railroad property. Maybe easier to see it on this survey.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right.
So you don't need a front yard setback, is that what you're saying? You don't need a front, you don't need a front yard setback, is that what you're saying?
No. Let me, yeah, we don't need a front yard setback.
It doesn't say conforms or doesn't conform, see? Nothing.
Yeah. Not for the residential part.
All right, I guess the question I'm going to ask you now is how far back is the house from, that the house you're going to build back from the property line, the front yard?
Okay, so it's the, it starts at, let's see. It's 26 foot, 7 plus 35 foot, 8. Sorry that these aren't, oh, wait, sorry, 60 feet.
How much?
60 feet.
60 feet. Wouldn't that's what we require, 60 feet? Hold on, wait one second.
I'm sorry, that, 60 feet is the front yard, yeah, that's this front yard setback, and the, our.
Front, I'm going to go front yard, hold on.
Where were you starting, 60 feet?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was reading the wrong thing.
60, 60 feet is required?
Correct.
Okay. Where are you from the garage? Where does the garage go to the property line?
It's on a town road, though.
Huh?
It's on a town road, though.
So.
The town road.
It's not, that's a private road, isn't it?
The private road, yeah.
Or is that, the private road's different, though, isn't it?
Well, we don't have a survey.
We have a survey.
See, we don't have a survey.
Yes, we do. It's been included in the package.
We do?
That is a survey?
No, that's in overlap. Survey's in your package.
Right. It's a private road, but that's a private town road, isn't it?
What page number is that?
Because that should tell us right there. I think this is an HO.
AO2?
But that's, this is not a standby in engineering.
It's not a survey, though. I'm looking at the same thing here, right? Got it?
Sorry, that was, it was in, that's based on, it was in the previous package, I apologize.
Okay. See, we don't see a survey.
Oh, it's in.
Huh?
It's in the first package, I think.
First, I'm sorry?
It was in the first package.
It's in the survey.
You find a survey?
We have.
Hold on. All right, hold on, let's go. We're good here.
Well, according to, you know, what is on your chart, you have a front yard setback of 26 feet, 7 inches.
That's to the garage.
Correct. Right, which is the closest structure to Hudson River Lane.
Right.
Well, that's something I'm going to clarify with the code enforcement officer, because it's listed here as existing non-conforming, which I just want to clarify, and we should clarify with the code enforcement officer how he came to that conclusion. I assume it's because it's not changing a pre-existing structure in that location in terms of the front yard setback. But, you know, that's something we can clarify with Greg Warner.
This is the old, the existing garage and, and how.
The new garage is going to go for the existing garage?
Is it? I believe.
We're going to replace the existing garage.
In the same location?
In the same location.
Okay, so that's presumably why Greg determined that.
I think the house comes to the same.
So it's going to be in the exact same location?
Yeah, we're.
Proposing to make it about 4 feet wider.
Do we have the new plans that show that?
Um. Yeah, we don't differentiate on this. Apologize.
The overlays. I've got my question.
Adam, is the garage is not 60 foot, 60 feet back?
Right.
So he's going to need a variance for the front.
You know, that's something that we're going to clarify with Greg Warner, because they have listed here existing non-conforming, and we're going to have to clarify with Greg or someone from the code enforcement office as to whether they need a variance or whether he came to the conclusion that it's an existing non-conforming structure, and they're not changing the setback.
Okay. Oh, I understand, I'm just trying to say, it's the same setback. Well, would that go along with the, what are you saying about the side yards he has now?
Well, he's changing the side yard setbacks. On one side, the side yard setback will be somewhat bigger than it was previously. I mean, we're talking about, looks like, you know, by a few inches.
Right.
The other one, again, it looks like by a few inches, perhaps a few feet, is going to be somewhat smaller, but.
Okay. So we're just trying to, you know, find out what we need here, you understand what I'm trying to say? You know, because this has got to all be down, because, you know, somebody comes out and measures, and you measure, and you're a foot over, you're in trouble, you know what I'm trying to say? You're not looking for that.
I mean, and I, just one more thing to add to the mix, is that, you know, we are extinguishing the center property line, so we're actually increasing, we're decreasing the non-conformance because, I mean, they're, both lots currently are non-conforming entirely, like there's not an inch that's conforming.
Right, how are you decreasing it?
Because we're, by taking out the center property line, then we're taking away the two 30-foot setbacks that are required on either side.
You're merging the lots, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Are you saying that you're merging the lots?
Yes, we're merging the lots, yeah.
Okay. So the two smaller lots will become one larger lot?
Correct, yes. So I mean, we're substantially increasing the conformance.
In terms of lot size?
Yeah.
Yeah, lot size, but still the house, the size of the house is still going to need variances.
Yeah.
You know, so I mean, that's.
And, you know, the easy thing would be to plop it right in that sweet little rectangle, but the whole idea is to try to keep it open because of this unusual thing of having a boat ramp in the middle.
And looking at your plan, I can understand it now, because the second floor has, there was a dining room over there or something like that.
Yeah.
I think that, you know, so it's not two structures, it's just you're keeping one, on the first floor, you're keeping open for like a boat or something like that.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, all right. I understand that, I understand the plan now, I just, I'm a little confused on the variances, okay? And that's where we have to be exact.
And I'm sorry if I'm coming off as flustered. I wish I had the answers ready for you, and I'm embarrassed not to have that.
Okay, well, you're going to have to have them ready next month, okay? And in the meantime, we'll, I guess, should we speak to Greg about the front yard, or Adam, or what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, we'll clarify as to whether the zoning conformance chart, which you provided on AO9, coincides with the code enforcement office's position with respect to the variances that you will need. I mean, clearly you need some variances. For example, you have impervious surface coverage, you need a variance for that, which you have down. Side yard setbacks, you need a variance for that. So we're going to have to clarify with the code enforcement officer as to other variances that may or may not be needed in their judgment.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Would they also need a variance for bulk on the two lots, bulk coverage, you know, with the two buildings? Or I'm not, I'm not sure how it reads on Hudson River Lane, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, well, I mean, surface coverage.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
The maximum is 10%. They're proposing 18%,
Okay.
which is relative to the two pre-existing lots. One lot had fourteen point seven, and the other one had twenty-three percent. So with merging it as one lot, it's less than twenty-three, but more than fourteen.
Okay.
Okay, um, I'm gonna ask if you would find out what variances we're gonna need on this, so speaking to the code enforcement officer, how he figured out that, you know, the front yard, you're gonna call him, Adam, or?
Yes.
Okay, and then get, and get that straight, and, um, we're not trying to ho- ho- hold you up, we're trying to help you.
No, I...
You understand what I'm trying to say? Nobody's trying to hold you up.
Yeah, I fully appreciate that, yeah.
We're trying to get, trying to get, help you, you know, to do something like this, but...
Worst thing is to prove it, and then Greg Warner says, well, you need this too, and you're back here again.
You're back here again, you know, we, we wanna get it to, when we speak about it, we know what the heck we're talking about. And we have it down to the, to the inch, because, uh, you know, they're gonna come out and measure. And if you're a foot over, you're gonna tear that. We already had one house have to be torn down, on Hudson River Lane, years ago, so, and we don't wanna go through that again. So that's, that's why we're, that's why we're being, trying to be careful, okay? Is there anything else you, you would need for next month's meeting, besides that? Any board members, you think, anything else you would like to, I think the plans kinda speak for themselves.
Right, thanks.
Okay, in all honesty, I think you did it, you did a good job there. It makes sense.
Clearly, that's where my, my effort went.
The plan, the house makes sense, makes plans, we're gonna find out where we're gonna put it, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. But, uh, because I'm trying to get you ready for a public hearing.
Great, yeah.
You understand, so, you know, you're not ready yet, okay? But our attorney's gonna speak to, um, uh, Mr. Warner and find out exactly where we're at, and how he figured this, and how he figured that, because he may have a different interpretation or something like that, you know? Maybe you don't need one variance, maybe I'm wrong or something on a point, you know, so that's what he's gonna clarify. And we'll have that all, here for all, for next month.
Great.
And, um, I wanna try and bottle it up next month, so that we could set a public hearing for the month after that.
Okay, great.
July, okay, that's my, that's what my plan is to do, all right?
Great, yeah.
Anybody have any other questions on this?
Your, your survey, do you have one that's engineers, engineered certified?
Yes.
Can you get us a copy?
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
You can reduce it to our size.
I think you have that from the previous submission.
Oh, you have it in the first package?
Yes.
The survey's in the first one.
Okay, all right. No. It's there, okay, all right. And that's it, so if you can, if you can, well, I don't get that together for us and see what we need, and, uh, next month, uh, we could put it all together, we'll set you for a public hearing.
Great.
Okay? So, in the meantime, I would try and, uh, have a woman, what's her name, Mrs., the owner?
Uh, Jenna Gerard.
Right, tell her to start to speak to her neighbors and all like that, you know, because, uh, we've had some previous experiences down there that weren't, you know, great, you know? Trying to say, so...
Big cookies, right?
Yeah, you know, so we had a lot of, so she's gonna save herself a lot of time and trouble, in all honesty, if she goes like to her neighbors, especially people on the left and the right of her, on either side of her, you know, maybe at the end of the street, maybe not, but it's a pretty big house. It's probably gonna be the biggest house in the area, I would think. I can't, you know, I know the area, I haven't been down in a while, but I don't think it's a house quite that big there.
Right, yeah.
So, you know, so, uh, if she could, you know, speak to her neighbors and, uh, let them know what's going on. I guess, so this way they're prepared, so when they get the letters, they're not in shock, you know what I'm trying to say?
Appreciate that.
What's the total square foot of the house gonna be?
Oh. Have that the next, next meeting, okay?
We still don't know.
Well, I got four thousand, what, what, I added it up, I don't know, but I'm not gonna hold it to it. Four thousand seven hundred, but you have that next...
Yeah, we'll have that nailed down.
I want you to have that exact for me, okay? Exactly what the square foot is gonna be.
It's gonna be tattooed right here.
Tattooed on your head, and what, and what your, your sidelines are gonna be and all like that, and, and, uh, we'll work it out, and, and we'll try and set it up for a public hearing for July, okay? If we can, that's what we're gonna plan on doing.
Excellent, great.
Okay, any other questions, anybody have? Okay, that's it, so it's between our attorney finding out exactly, you know, what we're doing, you finding out exactly how big the house is.
Great. Promise it won't go anymore.
We can, well, these are little important things that we need to know, okay? All right, have a good night. That's it, thank you. Any old business, any new business, a motion, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Stone and Mr. Stone, second, all in favor? All right, I knew that was unanimous. Okay, that's it.